Karen, please, for Park, EMS, and Fire.
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
He skipped a year.
It's just a work session.
That's right.
Okay, so we have EMS, Fire, and Park. EMS got called out on a run. And so I was gonna have Mike actually go first. Because Amber's coming at five-thirty. She's gonna take care of Park and the visitor center. And then Terry's working out of town this week. And so he's gonna get here as soon as he can, but didn't think he'd make it at five. So I said, you know, we'll just bump you to the end. So.
Okay.
Um, we can actually start by, um, I know Marlene's already familiar with the EMS budget. So we could go through the EMS budget and between Marlene and I, we can do our best to.
Sure.
Give it to you.
Absolutely.
And actually, it's one budget that is decreasing significantly.
Gosh.
Um, and Kevin has football practice, so he should be fine in here in about fifteen minutes. Um, so for EMS, um, I think they've got a, um, a grip on just scheduling and overtime and stuff that we kind of budgeted before last year, because we didn't know whether we were lucky. Um, and so we were able to take that, that salary number down significantly. Um, and when we get to, uh, we get salary ordinance, um, I think I did give you some information that they were requesting a little bit higher of a, of a bump than the dollar fifteen that everybody's getting. As there are other departments that got seven dollars, you know, over the last couple of years, they've gotten seven dollar raises and EMS has not kept, um, with that. So Mike felt that, um, a little bit more of a bump would keep his people and hopefully keep overtime, um, under control. So we, we think we can do that still and reduce that salary line item. Um, longevity is what it is. It doesn't, it's based solely on the number of years that are representative. And since we have two new people and we've lost two others, that, um, that number kind of starts over at the bottom for some of, yes.
Tell me again, how many EMS people do we have?
We have five full-time EMTs. Actually, right now we have four. All right. This, Mike's got, um, Richard and Travis. I think he's got a position open, so that's where we're at. But then there's a number of, like, I see a decent number of.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think we've worked to reduce pretty much everything else. Um, with the exception of insurance and bonds and gasoline. Um, and insurance, um, I talked with Joe Stiles from Miller Insurance, and he, um, shopped our policy around and, um, we're gonna stay with the same company, but he was able to negotiate a lower, um, increase than originally we were looking at. So we're looking at about eight percent, um, instead of twelve or fifteen. So we're right there. And.
I think the number in twenty-twenty-three was. Is this wrong? Was that what was spent in twenty-twenty-three for insurance? Seventeen thousand or something?
Yeah, I've got seventeen.
Okay, without four and thirty-six. Seventeen, we.
Seventeen, seven thirty-nine. Forty-three.
Cell phone, they reduced considerably.
We did, yes. Um.
You went with a new system, didn't you?
It's because of the new system.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna get rid of, um, the department, each of the department heads have a cell phone and Mike doesn't want it. To carry two cell phones. Excellent.
We're paying for his, they just pay for his and.
It is a personal one, so you don't necessarily have a, a program per state right now, so. So that's a high level on that one. And this is one department that has, um, has some of whatever revenue streams based on, but it's, it's not too much to ask, you know? It goes together.
But it has increased considerably in twenty-twenty-four. I mean, oh, God, I've seen what they've taken in considerably higher than the surplus.
Well, I think Mike got a lot of the back stuff done and rework stuff. I mean, it's all due to Mike.
Yeah.
Good question on that one.
Oh, I think it looks real good.
Yeah. Looks better than it did.
Sure does. Big eight thousand dollars there.
Waiting for the next one. I did send out information from the Tree Commission, um, and their budgetary request kind of went over yesterday. There's no change to it. Um, but Mike wanted to, they're requesting fifteen thousand, which is the same as last year. That's built into the first budget. We do have, um, we've applied for and we, in theory, have received an IU Tree Grant, which will result in putting new trees planted next year in an interim. Uh, they weren't able to provide that for us this year. We're hope, we're at the top of list for now. So if that comes through, the Tree Commission won't need the money for, won't, won't be used up fifteen thousand, except for maybe like a day of pruning. So there might be something for that. And they asked that, that money be switched over and allow Bob to use it for tree removal. So that's kind of the, um, on the quick, what they're reporting.
Well.
So we can just leave that figure in there. If we don't, if something happens with the Tree Grant again, they'll just have that money for, and Bob has money, um, budgeted for tree removal. We've got your EMS. Mike's on a call, so.
That was a quick EMS one.
Yeah.
How do, how do we find it?
We're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Amber to come over about five-thirty, then Mike.
You need to blow me a little bit.
Just wanted to get even.
You need to give me a little bit. I'm unlucky to just get off that field, because I got hit by Marcelus Anderson today without knowing he blindsided me when I wasn't looking. I about ended up in the woods. That's a big boy. Oh.
You better than we were last year?
Yeah.
Good.
Love the kids we got.
Say it again.
Love the kids we got.
Good.
I'm good, but a good bunch of kids over there, hard workers, good attitudes, young. Looking really.
New conference.
New conference. New schedule, kind of. Unfortunately, Justin doesn't go away. It's. They're pit. Doesn't touch us over there for them.
Remember I was in college and they had the, um, USA Today, USA Today Sports.
Yeah.
Had them listed, like, they had a big story on that.
Oh, yeah.
Back in the eighties when Russ was there and.
Oh, Renke.
And, and had.
He's not loved very much, by the way.
But I mean, they.
Are we being recorded? That's great, but yeah.
They, they, I mean, I remember they were like, uh, hadn't been scored upon.
No.
And averaged fifty or sixty point a game, maybe seventy and.
One of the best football coaches in, in, in the nation, in Little Sheridan, Indiana. Old Larry Bud Wright.
Bud.
Guy's forgotten more about football than I'll ever know, and he keeps it simple.
What do we do next?
Whoever shows up next.
Okay.
So Amber, I know Amber's coming over.
Okay.
I know Terry's coming over, so, um, wait for a couple minutes. I texted Amber just to say.
We can do police again since.
Wait for your performance here.
Do it from last night.
Terry's working me.
Okay.
Um, but just a preparation for tonight. Here's the.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Amber. And then I have it. Have one.
Good.
Thank you. You're amazing.
I do appreciate that we did on the tree zone for me and all of them.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so it's amazing, like.
I'll tell you, we need that, that little double A, that little summer helper we hired, he was, he was hopping around like a flea, getting that brush. Oh, yeah.
On that brush then.
Yeah. It looks so much better. And it's good to get them up. And we have one down by our office that I was complaining about that was so low, we can't back out of the driveway without, you know, when you see down the road. And I see they trimmed part of that one.
IU's, looks like IU's gonna deliver again to the tree cohort. So we'll finally get the trees that we were supposed to get. Um, we're got a meeting by day. Thank you. Online, I gotta check my schedule, but anyway, um, hopefully we'll be able to get the fifty trees that were promised last year and, and, uh, intern to kind of do a study for us for trees and where we're at. Unless I have an emergency again, I hope not.
And it's nice to trim the topside of some of those down by the school, too.
It is.
It's underneath the power lines that, that way they don't get so big and.
I think there's a subtle, but I. That's, there's a couple branches we need a bucket truck on. And probably some of our pretty close lines in the houses, so they'll probably need a professional.
Yeah.
Patch on them to get them out, but there's a few. List of the twelve trimming and then got the replacement list still from this year that's still got enough on it. They're really elk cart heavy. There's a lot of focus going into elk cart. If you can read between the lines.
Yeah, I know. Hope look, hopefully.
I am. It's simply because one of the major categories.
Yeah. And you, and. That combination's perfect.
It is, and it's, it's what they're looking for and they're prioritizing it. Um, because that's the, apart from access to maternal prenatal stuff, followed right behind child development, that's what gets people stick. I've heard that about five times in the last two months. People who seem to know.
If we need to ask for more, we can ask for more. Get that.
I'd ask for, the only thing is that, that came through really clear today was that you gotta have, so the maximum, you gotta have twenty percent public match, right? But it doesn't exclude you if you can't come up with that full twenty. Because it's on the portfolio level, so they gotta have it. So we got, I don't know what they said, forty-five million in the ready for the region. So they gotta match up to nine million of that. But it doesn't, you can come in at fifteen, somebody else might come in with more at twenty-six on the mat, you know, whatever. But obviously with a competitive pool, the closer you get to that twenty percent match, when, if you got your capital stacks ready to go and you got the right team.
Are they looking at all for collaboration?
Oh, they're always looking for that. They're looking for the regional narrative.
But for us to collaborate, we gotta know who's doing the kind of work we're doing.
Well, that's it.
I don't know who that is.
Well, I would suggest getting up with, uh.
I would, Brian.
Plymouth and the Community Foundation.
Yeah.
I think that's probably your quickest route, because I know she is doing it. That's a natural extension for you guys. I, I spoke with Karen about it.
Yeah. Really Brian did a lot of the work on that. It's his role.
I kind of, kind of chuckled today when they said they removed the federal, since there's no art funds going into it, they've removed the procurement federal. They said, well, at least you don't follow federal regulations. But procurement, most people kind of chuckled in there, because most, I mean, local municipalities follow federal procurement anyway, so it's kind of like, oh, yeah, but it doesn't make it any easier, right? Nothing's really changed that much on it, so. It is complicated, though. Like, the toughest part is on the backside, Dana, and the administration of the grant and making sure that they're, the channels of the money are going in a timely fashion and the right way. Because there's a, there's an audit. I mean, they're gonna audit that thing hard. And you better have your ducks all perky in a row.
Yeah. Keeping is accurate record keeping from the start, right?
Yeah, that's the key. The key, too, is if you got any capital expenditure, um, starting in, I think they said April of twenty-twenty-three towards the project, it counts. Because the budget was passed for the state last year on this one. And so any, anything that is incurred on the project itself, starting in that month, you can, you can't submit right away. Obviously, you gotta get funds and get approval, but you can start submitting those. So there were several, not so much with around here, but like some of those elk cart projects, they're underway. I mean, there we go. The, 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 the ready money is just kind of like the extra, like, for some, it's the actual ice cream, for others, it's the cherry on top, I think, so.
They're gonna do it. They just can do it quicker at ready, right?
Awesome.
Karen, do you know if the EMS has ordered any of the radios yet? They had sixteen thousand dollars budgeted this year.
I'm not aware. I think that was the discussion that they were trying, I think we talked about that, that they weren't sure if stuff had been ordered and they were waiting on it. So he was kind of waiting to see what came in before.
They haven't.
Yes, I don't know anything, yeah. I would have anything, no.
Any of that sixteen thousand spends.
They have. And talking with Mike, too, he felt like that wasn't probably gonna be necessarily a priority this year.
They's only got ten thousand budgeted for next year.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Needs to get some of them out of this year's budget.
Well, and that's a conversation that he's trying, as he took over, he was trying to set where they were.
Yeah.
Before going out and getting anything. Jeff had left it pretty good with equipment. That's, that was what Mike's kind of assessment was. But yeah. I think that lift comes, uh, in a month here. We're gonna, I think Wes has taken the rig, too. Get it fitted and that should have it done in a day.
Really?
That's what Mike was telling me. Yeah, pretty efficient.
Has Wes started his new job now, hasn't he?
Yeah.
Does he?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked a little bit. He's, seems like he's around just about as much.
Good young man.
Didn't mean to break up the party by showing up.
Well, you did, you know. We were.
My little ray of sunshine comes forward out of the clouds.
You said it.
Go back to football, how many boys are playing? So our numbers look like we're probably gonna come into the season with about twenty-three. The nice thing about being single A football is most people are saying, Bo, you got about, you got about eleven players and about twelve, fourteen more harpies. I bet you can plug in if you need to. They're good, they're good kids. I'm not insulted. You know, we went through an academy season where we had eighteen players. We finished the season with eighteen players. We started with, we call ourselves the Dirty Thirty, because all they have are thirty guys. We're playing four A football with thirty kids. We show up, so we're like, for Buff or Karen Catholic down in Indy, and they got, they got three times the number on their sideline. We got five kids that haven't even hit puberty yet, Dana, and they're standing on our sideline as freshmen.
You ready to go in? Remember Turkey Run used to have a team?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, wait, what can we do for you, buddy? We thought you had a question.
Oh, wait. He's just resting his arms. Where Turkey Run used to have a team?
I remember Turkey, but they were everybody's homecoming game.
And I would, I would follow this, they're now, they're down in Park County.
Yeah.
Heritage Park, they did again.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
But, I mean, I always followed the football scores every Saturday morning. They, it would be normally fifty to six, sixty-two to zero. I mean, it, they never had a kicker, they was, they'd find a touchdown somewhere at the end of the game, they scored. And so.
Kansas City teams.
Oh, it was bad. And their field was bad, everything was bad. So I always took my cross-country team down to Turkey Run State Park, um, every year for a four-day camp when school started. And so we'd be camping, we'd look across the field and we'd see them practicing at night. And I knew we could beat them. I knew our cross-country boys.
Yeah.
They were athletic.
Without a single practice.
They could go beat that Turkey Run team. I knew they could. I always, I always thought it was, hey, it's a little scrimmage, see what happens.
You know, there was another team like that in Indiana.
Cross-country versus.
South of Indy, Edinburgh.
Yeah.
Horrible. And Kelly and I would go in every Saturday morning after, you know, during the season. And the first thing we'd do is we'd look up, see how Edinburgh did. And we put bounty down. We literally had a poll and it carried over for six years for a win.
Just real.
That poll was up to six hundred bucks. People were betting on the win. Like, the score, and finally they got it. It was, finally somebody got, got it right.
Finally gotta be, probably play truth or your mouth.
I can't imagine. You don't have to be good, Dana. Your AD has to be good. He has to get the schedule. We play Attica at the beginning of the year.
They're bad right now.
They haven't won a game in three years.
They're bad.
I, I kind of shot my mouth off. I told the boys, if we don't win this one, I'm running through the middle of town in my boxer shorts. By God, we're gonna win.
I do remember Turkey Run girls softball, one class system, they won the state championship thirty years ago.
You know, those cornfield high schools, you get a team every ten years. It was the class above me. We had a great football team our junior year. We just hit a better one. We just got razored by Frontier High School. But we were good. They went all the way to semestate that year. But she, it's all about those, same with basketball. I loved it, you know, they ruined Indiana basketball when they went to this class system. We love the upsets, man. You know, when you went down Lafayette-Jeff, that once in twenty years you can play down there and beat them. It's too bad.
What your conference is for, right? You could win a championship.
Well, look at Central, turn out, so nobody goes to Central. I mean, you had real rivalries. We played Benton Central, that old ground, Jim of theirs. Got thrown out of the game, because they got two technicals in a matter of like five seconds.
You did?
I did. I felt like I had a clean block and referee and I didn't get along on that one. And I lost my mind at a minute. And I maybe said some choice words.
I can't believe.
Something to the effect that I think this is a barn manure, but he's different choice words with that. And I mean, I screamed at once and he blew the whistle and teed me up. And then I had to call this, tell him I thought the technical was also barn manure. Next thing I know, I'm on the bench. I was just waiting for my dad when I got home, I was a sophomore.
Your, your poor coach is probably still saying, the worst that game was done, he couldn't keep his mouth shut.
Matter of fact, we won by ten and I was happy. The only other time I did something like that, we were over in Kellin, Indiana, and I stole home base and I know I was safe. And I knew the, I knew that umpire was a cousin of a kid that was playing on South Hidden's team. And he pulled me out. And I mean, I just got up, just, I lost my mind. I was embarrassed. No discipline. Hello, Miss.
See, I have to go to a triathlon volunteers meeting real quick. Sorry, Amber, if you're. It's good.
Yeah.
I'll be back.
I'll believe that. It's, yeah.
And I'm reading here.
Sal, put on some. All right, be good back. Be with you about ten years. I'll find you.
They haven't changed in, I don't know how many.
Haven't. With your permission, man. I don't want any more of this clock.
I can't, also, it was, what's up, Mike, had EMS call, so. That feels really quick.
Yeah, I have a bit of sideburns and duty balls.
Yep.
Okay. You want me to start and keep going? All right, you guys, okay. Um, I'll start with the park one. Um, I mean, I don't think anything super controversial. Uh, actually, less than twenty, there'll be less than twenty-twenty-four. So, um, I can take it line by, line item by line item. Um, well, keeping salaries exactly the same. Um, that does still give us some space, uh, for, uh, if the next person wants to explore like potential raises, uh, because, uh, it'll be less of a salary than for the superintendent than what I'm at. So they're, uh, they're, uh, they posted for fifty thousand and I currently make fifty-six, so, um, that, that's still good. Yeah, sorry. Yes, um, tomorrow's my last day. Yeah, really? Yes, so, um. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's a difficult goodbye, but, um, time for the next sleep.
Where are you going?
Um, I'll still live in Culver. Um, my fiance works at Culver Academy, so we'll still be here. Um, and then I will be working as a project assistant for an engineering company. Um, it's predominantly work from home, so it'll be about three, four days at home and then one or two days I'll commute south then. Yeah, sorry. I shouldn't have assumed you'd heard, but, um, but yeah, there's some news. Um, so that, that takes care of the salary line item. It does allow if, um, potential raises want to be explored, that would be my recommendation in terms of, you know, our, our lifeguards and our, um, maintenance workers would be, that would be my recommendation for general park staff, it's a dollar more per hour. Um, I, we talked a bit, I, I didn't make that recommendation for the concession sand attendance. Uh, they're at ten dollars an hour, but, um, that, it would cover that fine. Um, longevity, that obviously goes down, um, for obvious reasons. Um, benefits, that remains the same. Uh, that, that, that depends obviously on who fills that role. Um, lawn and maintenance, we actually took that down five hundred dollars. We weren't utilizing all the funds every year, uh, so we, we decided we could take it down a bit. Um, concessions, exactly the same, don't see any changes there. Uh, we took sand and gravel down by a thousand. Uh, every other year, we do a big haul of all my sand. Uh, we did that this year, so we won't be needing it for twenty-twenty-five. Um, other supplies, kept it the same. Um, postage, same thing. Uh, telephone going down, fortunately, uh, due to that switch over to Indiana Telephone Network. Um, from there, uh, yeah, uh, printing, same thing. We felt, um, pretty, essentially, everything else, uh, beyond that is pretty much the same. Uh, the only other line item that changes is machinery and equipment, and we took that down because I've purchased all new equipment within the past three years. And that, and the big one being this year, a new gator. So, um, there shouldn't be any need for large machinery or equipment, um, here, anytime soon. So new leaf blower, new weed whackers, new gator. So, uh, we were comfortable taking that down to ten.
I think it looks good.
A couple of controversial, uh, budgets you guys really have to go through. So, sorry, well, not sorry, but I'm boring.
Try to be a little bit more saucier next time.
Yeah.
Nope, yeah.
Controversial today, so be on your toes. I'll let the others do that.
Do you have the income figures for all?
Do you have the income figures for last year or?
At my fingertips, I can bear in mind, but I um can get them. Well, obviously having that revenue increase for the uh increase of the spaces that we peer spaces that we had this year. Um, but again, a lot of that's going to be going toward pure sockets uh improvements over the next three years. Um. That should be the only projected revenue.
You still got one, one pure left?
So, no, uh, so we just only finished C. Um, the plan is for uh, the plan is for B to be done. Um, this upcoming, you know, be- before the start of the next season. And then it'll be A for the upcoming twenty twenty-six season. And then it will be the swim thirty. I don't, I mean, or if you wanted to wrap up the swimming courtesy pier with A would probably just to wrap it up.
I think what.
C pier is pretty bad. I mean, courtesy pier is pretty bad.
We'll probably do it all in one, probably next spring under one contract.
Yeah.
And and try to have that knocked out for the spring of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation. I don't know how much life that courtesy pier has.
As we all were informed the week.
Yeah, as we all heard. So it it is pretty bad.
Anything we can do about that in your opinion when we've installed next spring?
Um, the, well, number one, like the the panels, some new panels definitely are needed. Like you can feel them. They're gonna crack. And they they uh, you know, the thing that stinks about the crazy period, it gets hit by a boat every weekend. Every weekend in the summer. And that's just a product of the drivers on the lake. Um. And that's why it's so bad. So like really pointing fingers. And you're really, um, the panels could be better. Um, but outside of that, really, the only in terms of stability, the only thing you can do is address the the sockets. Um, but I don't know. I don't know how.
And we address the sockets and it keeps getting hit by boats.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I put I put out another buoy and it did. And we bought additional white buoys. I don't know if you noticed that. And we put out four more this year. And I we put them out um coming into the spaces because there was a request from pure space runners to slow people down coming in. But I added one by the courtesy pier, slow people coming into the courtesy pier and that that.
You almost need a a a
Yeah.
A buffer system between the pier and the boat.
Yeah, it's it's just crazy. Yeah.
And it's gotta be all the way around the pier because it's gotta screw into the pier.
Yeah, they're coming at it from both sides.
Yeah. I mean, at a certain point, you don't have to put it in anymore because it'll be too shallow. They can't come in that fast on that towards a beach, but start about ten foot out and just put screw in on the pier itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't make people drive better.
Yeah, it's just, and then they do it and then they don't tell us. And then, yeah, we kind of have to find out for ourselves. That's unfortunate.
Yeah. And it probably the pier ends up looking worse than the boat does.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, those panels get so bad.
I don't think the state would allow concrete buffers.
Right.
How long do you think those uh sockets, if they're not, you know, the peers aren't hit by boats? How long they will probably last?
Yeah, I mean.
They have an estimate on that?
How long? I mean, you go out there now, it's pretty bad. Like, I I mean, in a perfect world, it would get done before next year, but.
No, I mean, uh, the ones that are being put in live.
Oh, they'll be put in.
They have life expectancy of.
Um, yeah, well, the so for, you know, for example, the ones that were there previously is twenty years.
Okay.
Um, my recommendation would be not to wait twenty years. Um, you know, more like in the range of fifteen to eighteen would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ev.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't expand it that long.
Yeah, you can't. If once something is loose or
Yeah.
You can't tighten it.
Yeah, you don't want to be addressing it when it's heated.
Have your concessions stayed about the same?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, so it usually sits around forty, is it, Karen?
Why? I saw you erase it. I.
It's just like, right now, like this year, I I printed out the
Yeah.
The the numbers through the end of July. So it's just the same couple of days.
Yeah.
But between the passes concessions, swim lessons and concessions, we're at forty-one thousand six thirty-five.
Yeah.
So.
Revenue wise, we don't, we don't really introduce like, oh, yeah, a lot of different items that we do in terms of what we sell. We already do so much, you know?
Yeah.
Our stuff is kind of hard. Takes kind of takes the back burner.
It's quite a bit to sell.
Yeah, it's all pretty like be each pass admissions like really just takes care of a lot of it.
Yeah.
An ice cream.
Yeah. Yeah, the specific concessions were just under seven thousand dollars. And then swimming was twenty-nine thousand. Um, passes were four thousand seven thirty-five. Kayaks, eighty-eight bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try avoid those ones a lot. Those ones are.
Good.
And just say, you get, yeah, we get like there are days where just like, we just won't do it. We're just so busy that administering more is tough and.
Yeah.
It, yeah. Putting like rules and stipulations on that too is hard and making people come back and.
Got to have a boat to go out and get them.
Yeah. They don't come back by a certain time. Like we're required to call like patrol and D N R. So like that becomes a thing and it's just, yeah. Like we have to assume they're like a missing person at that point. We have to treat it that way. So it's kind of dramatic, but. Why it's not favorable. So.
You want to visit our center?
Yeah, if you guys are looking, I would love to. Um. Hopefully, just to D D, um, the Culver Lake Back Cut View Visitors Center would like to request the same amount as twenty twenty-four, which was thirty thousand dollars for operational expenses.
Net goes for all operation.
Uh, yeah, operational expenses only. Um, so predominantly just um staff hours because usually uh how what that supports.
Media. Media, bread, that kind of stuff for now.
Media?
No, nothing like that.
No, that's C R C. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we approved they or said that one was okay. So I guess that's okay.
Certainly okay, why me?
I don't have a problem with it. I'm assuming the others don't.
Great. Well, we certainly appreciate it on behalf of the board as well and the other staff members. We again can't express enough gratitude for you guys' support. Um, we've had a pretty successful year, so um
Yeah.
We're really excited about, you know, the events and projects we've been able to accomplish. So bring some things back, you know? We'll be working a booth next week at Culver Academy's registration. I've been collaborating pretty heavily with our businesses to do that, which has been nice. You know, we got um I connected with like the parent rep or the director of parent relations. And we're gonna put like coupons for the businesses and the parent hoodie bags or visitor guides. We're happy that that relationship is, you know, we're doing that again. So.
That's good.
And of course, events on behalf of Andrew and Crystal, they've been knocking out of the park. So.
They do a good job.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, I can speak on behalf of the park superintendent position like.
There's the man.
Agreeing with that makes it easier. Hey.
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Any more on that?
On it? No, actually. Like a matter of five minutes. I'm like, I'm never meet.
Marlene's working on some pig ears.
Working on her numbers.
Hmm.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's for me. How you doing, Terry?
Ah, I'm in the.
If I can hear better, it's right. That's not me that time. Just for the record.
Yeah.
The floor is yours.
Hold on. Hold on, okay.
You didn't congratulate me. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the guys' support. It's all my life. Much appreciated.
Eighteen.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm glad you're at least staying in town.
Yes, me too. Yeah. Thanks a little bit in here.
Bye, April. We just moved to the back.
I'm swimming the, I mean, what am I gonna do for forty-five minutes, you know?
Give me a sandwich.
I would. I have coupons.
We got coupons. We got coupons. So. Any questions about the way we went about this year's?
Yeah.
We've already went through those like already. Marlene? Do you have any questions about this whatsoever? Really when we set this up and I don't think it's changed.
Does your board go on for all of this?
The council is not, so.
Council, council's gone over yet.
Oh, you guys got any questions about about the way it was set up for next year? Anything that you see out of the realm? The only big change that I know of is the under lease purchase agreement.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Which has changed to.
Gone up.
Yeah.
Covers some.
Yeah, trying to cover uh the new vehicle, which is two years away, but that money somehow is gonna have to be, as I've talked with Karen, manifested somehow because in three years from now, we're gonna come back in and ask for another truck. That's, and I don't know whether it's gonna be a tanker and then a grass truck. We've already explained, I tried to explain, it's gotta go that way. It's taken two years to get a vehicle now. So we've already went this our seventh year. And we didn't get one, so we fell behind a little. But the latter truck, what we planned a six-year, but the seven-year, and it's gonna be another year before we get that vehicle, which we've already agreed, we've already agreed to, it's coming. So the next one falls into the five years after that. So in three years' time, we're gonna be looking to purchase a tanker and grass truck also. So they're acquired, they're acquired in five years. Right. We'll have it in two years after that. That's what I'm anticipating happening. Can't guarantee what the market's gonna do, but I got a feeling. Same way as now, I don't think it's gonna change much. Talk to those people, they just shake their heads and go, can't make it fast enough. As long as this truck doesn't have to run into the back end of the other one financially. That's what I'm trying to make so it doesn't happen. I don't want that to go, whoa, now we know I have them. So that's far out as I can get.
That's where we're gonna work on putting money away in anticipation for.
As for anything else, I don't think anything else in my budget really changed hardly at all.
Yeah. Nothing significant for sure.
Uniform, we took down seven thousand dollars. We had just bought all new uniforms. The eight thousand you left in there is just like if we get somebody new.
One uniform that front of the buy or damaged uniform, something like that.
Is that the same way with the air pack?
Yes.
We just bought all new then.
Correct.
Okay.
But those both of those dropped down. Well, that one didn't drop as much, but it dropped down some. Because those are workable parts and they have to be serviced every year. So that probably will come out of that money when they get serviced every year. They get tested, they have to.
How many uh packs do you have?
Seventeen, I believe. There's seventeen, eighteen selling.
Yeah. Then you've got extra tanks. They all.
Every bottle has, everyone has two tanks.
Yeah.
As per N F P A says, we have to have that.
Right. Yeah, you don't want to run out and not have spare.
You have the ability of filling them, but it's just when you're working out of fire, you really don't have time to do that too much.
No.
Kind of busy for a few minutes usually.
So do they, do all of them have to be certified every year?
Yes.
Okay.
All the air packs have to be. The bottles don't.
The bottles are.
Five years, right? Cascades every ten years, which isn't a lot of money, but it just has to be, you have to be certain. Be certain. Besides that, I don't know what else I would cut.
Is your, is your tornado sire in repair?
Uh, that is a line item that Karen and I put together because we were seeing how much money we're spending on these. And I talked to Marlene about it, also, you know, we're responsible for the repairs, so we're just trying to get where are we and
Trying to track what the cost is.
Right, that's all that is, tracking, to see what we've been putting into those, because we've had some repairs on a couple of batteries, it seems like three years instead of five years, that's a lot, it's not making batteries as well, I guess, I don't know. So that's just a line item to
Yeah.
Show what it's all about.
Okay. Because I was gonna say that, you know, the older they get, probably the more repairs there will be on them.
They are, yeah, they're motors and they operate, so anything that moves or operates.
Yeah.
And those are all of those. And well well, probably ten to twelve years in that range.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Well, that answered my question, so everything else looks normal.
Well, anything?
No, it's good, Terry.
Good.
Good.
Clean? Happy?
Um, yeah. Larry, one point two million dollar fire truck, I'm just super excited.
I wish it could be different.
In three years.
Yeah, yeah, that's uh
As happy as you could be.
Yeah.
Given the situation.
Twenty twenty, right?
Yeah.
And
So they tell me.
Your retirement thing, uh, looks like we've spent forty one and there's twelve.
From income, because we'll get the bill after first next year, right? So we're gonna cover the, the remaining plus next year pay for the next bill.
Right now.
This year's all paid for.
This year's paid for.
And we'll have the fifteen plus twelve is left from this year plus fifteen.
I think the first one we paid, first one we paid, you paid the third, the town paid the third, and the fire department paid the third, that's the only one that's gonna pay. Okay? That was the first year, but it fell into, it fell into January of the year when we got the bill. So that number, that money was money that wasn't covered, I believe, from last year's plus the difference.
There's fifteen thousand covered from last year. So it paid forty one, three forty eights. So there's twelve thousand, six fifty two left. And I think the next bill is gonna come, yeah, first year, so we're gonna cover funds for this year, pay this year. Because it's coming late.
Right, it's coming in December, it's coming like December thirty or something.
Yeah, so we're gonna pay it
They're doing year to year.
So we're gonna pay it at the end of the year.
I don't know, I think, I, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be, it's based on how many guys that are in the department. And then how many guys in the department that passed through everything that they have to do to be eligible for that, so that could change. I can't imagine it going any higher, I've been right on a little lower. And that was only a three-year buyback, if you remember. So that, that'll only be that high for this one and then one more, and then it should drop down to
Thirty nine.
If I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that was way down there, not, not that high.
So with bill coming in December.
In January.
In January, and cover this year's funds, use next year's funds.
How's your staffing, Terry?
Um, we just lost one the other day, one moved out of town.
Did you?
Going to fifteen, two or fifteen. We haven't had anybody new knocking on the door or looking, we put out stuff at the lake fest, we had a booth and set up and tried to get people to, you know, get involved and
Yeah.
Or to get people to
Yeah.
jump the hoops. Doing a little online training about some of that, how to, you know, try to, some new strategies or maybe, because it's not just us, it's all homeless haven't saved, they're a big department, so.
Have you gone into schools and tried to do a junior?
We do.
Big?
A few years ago, we picked up two, and both of those, one of the one that's moving right now was the other one was three years ago was gone. At a young age, it's hard to tell you, where are you gonna want it, what are you gonna do?
Right.
Teen, and I understand wanting to be there, but happened to be here, so I'm just like in a nutshell.
Good job, Terry.
Yeah, it takes a lot of help.
And we will, um, I will put this on the agenda at the August twenty second meeting. So if there's any questions, maybe who sends that we can tie up, we have between now and then, I'll just ask for approval for this, I'll get it submitted, advertised, we'll have our public hearing. I think our first meeting, last meeting in September, I think, and then the first meeting October, we'll pass it. We're just a little behind.
Okay, all right.
Are we adjourned?
Did you need feedback?
Go about where.